I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which the states are one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
All right. It's a point of information. I'm gonna start tonight by announcing that town meeting for tonight is being postponed due to inclement weather. So if you are on the roads and you're not hearing this, be careful. If you're at home and you were planning on physically attending the town meeting, don't. Stay home, be safe. I believe it's being postponed to Wednesday, so. A little FYI there. All right. Ticking things off, item 24, citizen's sign. Anybody in the room or online? I would like to come forth and say something that is not on the agenda this evening. No? Okay. Moving right along, we got item 25, a housing proposal for Windview Heights 2. So, we had two nights of public hearings. We received a plethora of emails, both for and against. I do want to take a moment, if I can find it, and read Housing Partnerships. So we had kept the public hearing open, for those who either weren't following along or were and forgot. We had kept the public hearing open until Thursday, January 12th, so that we could receive Housing Partnerships' decision, opinion, on this particular proposal. And they sent it to us, and then we closed the public hearing at that point. But we had held that at another strategic planning meeting, that we were already holding at Grandview, so it was not recorded. So for the sake of it being read, I'm just gonna go ahead and quickly read this. It says, "We request the following motion to be read to the Select Board in minutes, the next meeting, January 23rd, 2023. Motion to support the Windview proposal with reservations. While the Housing Partnership Committee agrees the Town of Burlington needs more housing for seniors, more affordable housing in general, and more diverse types of housing, all of which this residential development provides, we also believe the following. Seniors need housing choices that are integrated with the community. The proposed location is isolated from shopping and other retail, and is not an ideal location for seniors. There is no local transportation. It is not walkable. To ensure the development is safe and appropriate for seniors, we ask the Zoning Board of Appeals to obtain guidance from the town's Planning Department, Planning Board, and Conservation Commission, so they can make an informed decision about this development after a thorough and fact-based review of the comprehensive permit application. Motion passed, five in favor, none opposed, and one abstention." And then for the record, I went through all of the emails that we had gathered and put on the website for everyone to view. Lynn, thank you for doing that. Of the emails, I believe there were eighteen against twelve in favor. So at this point, I'm gonna pause and ask for the board's thoughts, questions, concerns. Talk it out. Discussion time, gentlemen. Who wants to go first? I'm gonna just throw it.
Do you want to go?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, obviously, it was a lot of interest in the community for this proposal. Anytime development in any residential area is gonna garner some feedback. Not surprisingly, most of the feedback that we received was, yes, we desperately need senior housing in town, but not in my backyard, essentially. So not surprising to hear a lot of feedback like that. Now, the owner of the property, purchased this property decades ago with knowing that it's an oversized lot, and that at some point in the future, they would probably leverage that oversized lot to accommodate for their golden years, and that time has come. So there are other things that could possibly be put on that lot. Could be a subdivision, could be a daycare center, it's allowed in RO, assisted living facilities, things of that such. This proposal that we have in front of us tonight, it's consistent with the findings, goals, and objectives of the recently completed housing needs assessment of just six months ago. I think it will create opportunities for a number of seniors in town who would like to downsize, at the same time creating an opportunity for younger families to get a foothold here in Burlington. So I would support the letter of support to DHCD for this development.
Thank you, Mike. Jim, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. And as Selectman Runyon stated, the developer, the owner, could potentially put anything there. So regardless of how the access is gonna be made and the issue with what's going on, something is most likely gonna go there. If it's an opportunity to add senior affordable housing, and we'd much rather see something like that, as opposed to something that we know is imminently gonna go there, regardless. I mean, you don't buy land to do nothing with it. I'm sure the developer is gonna do something with that land, one way or the other. And as Mike said, who knows what it could be? But that doesn't change that that property needs access. And I understand people in the neighborhood being upset. I would be too. My neighborhood, houses are coming down every year, and I hear the jackhammers and the ledge being broken, and it's not a fun thing, but every... I can't remember the last time I had a quiet summer, but it happens. That's the future, I guess. And the other reason why I'm leaning to supporting this is because we have committees to provide a service, to provide a recommendation to this board. And they do their due diligence, and some of them are very specialized, and that's the single-minded, focused on that one issue. And in this case, the Housing Partnership is focusing on senior housing. No one opposed it from Housing Partnership. So those two thoughts being said, that something's gonna go there, at least let it be something that we need, and the fact that Housing Partnership, who I have full faith in, and I have full faith in the ZBA when they get the proposal, the 40B. So I'm also leaning to approving this as well, approving a letter of support.
Okay. Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna differ from my two colleagues. Since I've been elected to the board, one of the things I've heard is protect the integrity of our neighborhoods, keep Burlington as the town we know and love. And I know that we do need senior housing and affordable housing, but this is the wrong place for it. I think it would set a really bad precedent if we start shoehorning these type of developments into the tops, on top of cliffs, on tops of neighborhoods. Nothing against the developer. I would try and do the same thing, but it's just the wrong, wrong place for it. My mother would never drive up what we're gonna construct as Mini Lombard Street to get up to the top of the hill. Again, the Housing Partnership said it's not walkable, it's isolated, and, I mean, I don't know how they could go unopposed to it with all those conditions, but I guess that's their right. So I think it is not a good idea for the town. I will not be in support of it. I do respect everyone's opinion, but it's just not the right place for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You got it. In the four years that I've been on this board, I don't think I've ever grappled with something as long as I've grappled with this. And I think that that's mostly because of how we've altered the process. We've instituted this new way of opening transparency of the conversation. And it's not, you know, I'm not trying to either bolster or discredit neighbors' concerns with something going in here, however, knowing that we essentially become cosponsors of this application, you know, that bears weight with the state begs the question that if we say yes, then we allow it to go in, because the state's probably not gonna say no. If we say no, then we open up a Pandora's Box of now having to delineate and decide which particular parcels get to have things built on them when it comes to Friendly 40B or not, right? I mean, and I think of it this way, there's three-ish acres across the street from where I live with nobody living on it, and somebody owns it, and someday it's gonna get sold. So is that not a good spot for housing? You know, like, how am I supposed to grapple with that, not having any functional data in front of me, knowing whether or not the developer's gonna be successful in building the particular location when it comes to everything that the comprehensive permit will cover? And that bothers me as somebody who has to essentially co-sign an application, you know, for bringing it forward to the state. I also recognize the need that, you know, that we need more diverse housing stock. I won't even say that it's necessarily affordable housing. I get six units isn't the world, but it's more diverse stock, right? So when we look at the town, we see single-family homes of moderate to small size being absolutely demolished for 3,000-plus square foot homes. And our housing stock is becoming that of, you know, we're shoving apartments in these pockets and corners, and then we're building these giant houses. What kind of a community does that build? And so, you know, I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth. You know, it's good, it's bad, it's good, it's bad. And, you know, I don't think that that's fair. You know, I voted for this three and a half, four years ago, when I first got on the board, not thinking that we had as much skin in the game when it came to the application itself. And that has since changed. I've learned more, so I wanna be clear about that. And I would encourage, if we are gonna create a motion in favor of this, that we would do so at least with a condition that, you know, we get to see the application before it goes out, that it all makes sense, and, you know, however someone wants to word it, you know, I'm not feeling my words this evening, but I gotta be honest, this has been extremely conflicting, and I'm probably gonna abstain. You know, I'm not sure that I wanna vote one way or the other on this. I think that, you know, it's completely... We're in a real pickle, and I think that if we... Either way we go at this particular juncture, we're gonna be opening ourselves to, I think, more scrutiny, and we don't have good answers moving forward, in my opinion. And that's just where I stand. So, I don't know if anyone wants to keep talking, or...
I'll just make one follow-up to some of the concerns raised tonight about location. The three most popular senior housing facilities we have in Burlington are Grandview, Tower Hill, and the other one across the street from Tower...
Richcrest.
Richcrest. They're the most popular, the waiting list says it all, and they're all in a nice residential setting. That's where the seniors seem to want to go. They don't wanna go to the sand pits on Adams Street or down there behind Wegmans. They grew up in a residential setting in Burlington, they'd like to remain in a residential setting in Burlington. You know, we've tried for years to change some of our zoning laws here in Burlington to accommodate our housing problems. We've batted around the idea of in-law apartments or accessory dwelling units, and we've gotten absolutely nowhere. A couple of years ago, we went to town meeting with a proposal to create a housing trust, went nowhere. Just recently, this past town meeting, there was a proposal over at the Rogers Pianos site that was knocked out of the park at town meeting. So we're not gaining any ground here in terms of our seniors, and I think this is an opportunity to do so. It's only a small step, it's a relatively small development, but we've gotta start doing something. Unless we can get some zoning changes through our planning board and our town meeting, it's not gonna get any better. You're gonna continue to see the gentrification of Burlington with, as you mentioned earlier, Nick, the little ranches and splits getting knocked down in favor of the 3,000-square-foot colonials, so.
Yeah.
I know it's not a perfect, it's not a total solution, but it's a step in the right direction. I know it's gonna irritate a few folks, and it's gonna be inconvenient for the folks that perhaps live there for a little while, but again, I feel very strongly, you all know, you know, very strongly about housing, particularly for our seniors, and I intend to support this.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, Mike. I think the bigger problem that we have is that, like, taking the state's enthusiasm for trying to create more housing statewide, I think that, you know, no matter what, when a developer comes in, they have to make money on that project. And I understand, I respect that 100%, but in doing so, those units will never truly be what we know as affordable. Some of them will, right? That's the whole point of the Friendly 40B. But to have a Friendly Grandview that's more affordable, that we can control and prioritize, gives residents the opportunity to stay in a more assured fashion. But conversely, that begs the question, is do we wanna become a developer and a real estate broker in our own community, right? Is that the way things are trending, that we have to then take that mantle on? I think the issue of housing is so big that, you know, whether we vote this up or down tonight, this project isn't gonna fix it. This is just a project of housing, it's going in, and I get and I respect that, right? But it's not gonna drastically change the problem that we have, which is trying to keep seniors and people on, we'll say, moderate income, people who are maybe just starting their careers, or people, you know, who, just to say, the service industry folks, right? Who wanna live close to work, who can't afford to live here. And that just blows my friggin' mind, you know? I mean, in all honesty, I mean, I get it, right? You have wealthier communities and, you know, communities that, you know, are working harder to maintain, but like, why can't we work toward a larger... I'm not pointing this question at you, but why can't we work toward a larger, you know, notion where, as a community, we are creating an ecosystem of housing that actually does meet the needs of the vast demographic, you know, population of our community? I don't know, and it's just, I don't know, maybe I'm being too altruistic, maybe I'm being too big in my thoughts, but, you know, these are the things that I keep asking myself as we talk about this project.
Just to follow up to that, I believe, Selectman Runyon stated, in order to do that, we have to look at our zoning and be creative with it so that we can do just that. So I think that's where the answer lies.
That's a great, that's a great point, Jim. Paul, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just ask a couple of legal notes. Any vote that the board takes, if we could just make it contingent upon the receipt of an updated application to DHCD, as well as the negotiation of a land development agreement, if necessary.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Gentlemen, anything else? Speak now, for a roll of your paces. Okay. Well, if someone wants to make a motion, you know, we're here.
I don't have my notes in front of me. Did you get it?
What Paul said?
Yeah.
I'd say what Paul said.
I would, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to provide a letter of support to the developer for the Mountain Road development parcel, with the conditions that we get a completed application, and we reserve the right to negotiate, if necessary, a development agreement before permitting.
A completed, updated application?
Completed, updated application.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained?
Aye.
Two, one, one. There you have it. I assume at a standstill, the motion fails, it does not pass, correct? Two, one, one, that's a failed motion.
Correct.
Okay. All right. That resolves that, for the time being. Moving on. Item number 26, we have the approval of the Grandview Farms fees. Who's speaking on this?
John Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we talked at our strategic planning meeting, we've been talking a little bit about needing to update the fees at Grandview Farms. We told you a little bit about some procedural types of changes we made, where we set up blocks of rentals times for specific programming, for example, for our staff programs to meet in use of utilities during the week, during the day, which we call weekday rental. We have a weeknight rental, which is our affiliated boards and committees and groups that meet there during the nights, during the weeks, and then on weekends, which is Friday evening and all day Saturday and Sunday, reserved for anybody, private renters or anybody else. The rates haven't been updated in quite a bit of time, and they weren't even covering the cost of having a custodian. So you have in front of you the requested new rates for the different types of rentals we have. We have four different types, and we just request that the board take a position on the new rates.
Okay. Gentlemen, questions, comments?
No.
We've discussed, we've at least, you know, heard from you guys at the strategic planning meeting, and this all made sense at that time. Okay, so if there's no further questions or comments, I mean, no longer hit a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the Grandview Farm rental rates as submitted.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained?
Four, zero, zero. Okay. Twenty-seven, we got an update electronic sign on Town Common. I'm looking at you, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it was not last Thursday night, but two Thursday nights ago, the advisory committee that the board appointed to try to work together, to try to figure out a general design of the sign at the Grandview Common. We're very fortunate, one of those members has some experience in signs, and I was wondering, Lynn, is it possible for us to put that up?
Do I have it? John, do you have it?
I'm sorry?
The new sign?
I can see if I can find it.
But the key to the warrant, it's in the warrant.
Sure, right now.
Oh, Article II.
So while we're pulling it up, so just to catch everybody up who might not be familiar with what we're doing, so six months ago, four months ago, we formally initiated a conversation to amend zoning bylaws so that we would be able to put an electronic sign on Town Common. Why? Why would we do the crazy thing? Well, because if you ever moved through the intersection of 3A and Bedford Street, you might have happened to pass a banner. You might have seen the banner, because a banner would be moving in the wind, perhaps. If there's nothing up there like there is now, you probably drive right past it, and notice the two janky wooden poles that are residing on that corner, because that's how we currently display information. One banner at a time, scheduled and booked through the central admin office, and then people spend dollars to then hang a sign, or the town hangs a sign advertising a town-sponsored event. It is not, in this board's opinion, as has been discussed, how Burlington, I think, should be representing itself, or the events that it holds, or really, for that matter, any messaging that we want to be putting forward to the rest of the community. And so we said, okay, well, you know, we should really try and get something more up-to-date, something that we can control remotely from here at Town Hall, something that can display multiple messages over a period of time, something that is more representative of the class and respect that a town like Burlington, you know, really strives for, and in my opinion, achieves quite often. And so, thanks to Mr. DeBona, who has some Photoshop chops, after the advisory committee had met two Thursdays, was it two Thursdays ago? I think we were... The discussion was had, it actually happened fairly fast, which I was surprised, I was glad, so it was Mr. DeBona representing ZBA, Kathy Byer from ZBRC, we had...
Ernie.
Ernie, and Brendan from Planning, and then Joe was the officially designated Select Board member. I stuck around, because I wasn't breaking quorum at that point, so I stuck around. And quickly, folks gravitated towards the notion, if you're looking on the screen, this is being shown, toward having the sign reflect the town campus, which I think the important thing. You know, brick incorporation, the white roof line with the pillars on the side, you know, to really have a really nice sign at the corner. Now, this is all well and good, you know, but tonight, we were going to be coming in front of town meeting to ask for the zoning amendment change, so that we could then go ahead and finalize the design, work on the policy, and, you know, go from there. So tonight, because we could not schedule a second advisory council meeting ahead of this, we wanted to do it at this meeting and share with everybody. So for everyone's first... Now, mind you, this is not set in stone, no pun intended, you know, but this is an opportunity for everybody to see a proposed look of what this new electronic sign could look like, should town meeting on Wednesday pass the article. So, Paul, anything you wanna add?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just, I'd like to thank that committee. I think they worked very efficiently at the outset. Someone made the suggestion that we should try to mirror the town buildings on the Common. I think the gazebo has a brick base and a white wood frame, so I think there was a sentiment to try to fit in with what we already had there. And, you know, I know, me personally, and I know everybody has a different opinion on signs, I'm really pleased with the direction the committee went in, I think it makes sense. And even if someone doesn't love this sign, I think that they would sort of understand how it sort of fits into the character of what we already have in that area. So I'm very thankful to that advisory committee.
Agreed. Mr. DeBona, anything you wanna add, since you're here? I don't know if anybody from the advisory committee is online, but I know that you're here, and I wanna thank you for the time you took to at least mock this up for us, give us a point in the right direction. But anything you wanna add?
I think you pretty much covered everything. Do you have anything to add? Can I answer any questions if someone added one related to it?
All right. From the board, gentlemen, thoughts? What do you just think?
I think it looks great. I really like it. Yeah.
Yeah, I like the trace of the building materials you've chosen. I hope we'll be successful at town meeting. It's high time, we've done something with that corner, bring us into the 21st century technology-wise, and take care of an eyesore that's been there for a long, long time. The one thing I did wanna stress, and I think it's important, coming from my background, and Jim is probably gonna agree with me, this also allows us to broadcast emergencies that we may have in town, whether there could be public health emergencies, could be any sort of a police fire emergency, road, construction projects, water breaks. There's a lot of good reasons to have this there, to notify people in a timely fashion, in addition to, you know, obviously, events that are held around town and on the Commons. No, it's long overdue, in my opinion. I hope town meeting agrees and supports.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a follow-up to what Selectman Runyon said, that's the reason why I keep referring to this as a community message board, as opposed to a sign, because that's the whole idea, is to get improved communication with the residents, hence the communications plan that you got rolling. And, you know, I'm tired, I shouldn't say tired here, I don't like when people say, "No, I didn't know about that, I didn't know about that." Well, we, you know, now, they'll know about it, it's gonna be right there, and granted, they may, people may not drive by that intersection every day, but it's another way of increasing our communication to the residents, as Mike said, with important notices, alerts, detours. Off the top of my head, the Fourth of July parade, you know?
That's right, yes. And Christmas trees. Christmas tree pickup, someone could have the audacity to come by and toss their Christmas tree in my front yard the other day.
Off the top of my head, the Fourth of July parade.
That's right, yes. And Christmas trees, Christmas tree pickup, someone can have the audacity to come by and toss their Christmas tree in my front yard the other day.
Sorry, Mike, I didn't know where to put it.
But I just think it's a good thing all the way.
Agreed, agreed. And to further a point that Paul had made at one point, you know, right now, we have that TPW Highway sign on the opposite side of the street, which number one, doesn't look great, you know, but is functioning as a way for us to do multiple messaging over the banner, which can't change. This will at least give us an opportunity to move that to another area of town or other areas of town, so when we have emergencies, when we have, you know, key pieces of information that we have to get out there in a quick way, we'll have that resource back in our back pocket, because this will be up at the Town Hall changing and, you know, showing that. So, yeah, I mean, you know, I think it's, I think it's great. I'm looking forward to discussing with Town Meeting on Wednesday. So that was just an update. If anybody else has anything to add, I'm just going to quickly look. No, 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 okay. Jeff, thanks so much, appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Appreciate the rest of the advisory committee's work on this as well. Okay, next up for discussion, we have item 28, DEI. So the DEI committee we had instituted over a year ago with a charge in a mission, and their time expired in November, they provided us with their final report, and then through a series of very busy meetings in the holidays, we have not had a moment's time to reconvene and discuss any possible plans moving forward, you know, whatever that might mean. So I wanted to initiate that discussion this evening and see where it took us. A few things I think I wanted to prattle off real quick, and then we can have some discussion, so. Let me see, so the charge was to evaluate and develop a framework focused on diversity, equity, inclusion, from which several strategic initiatives and actionable items can be developed and presented to the select board. Two of the things that I know that were tactically accomplished was the update to the mission statement that we took a vote on, as well as some contract language updates that were discussed and discussed with the unions and then subsequently updated. The recommendation of the committee is to maintain learning and development by a select board and other boards and committees that were initiated over the last year. I think that there are multiple paths forward for this, but I just wanted to, like I said, quickly initiate discussion and see, get a feeling, a temperature check of the board. Don't all jump at once.
I'll go, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I think we need to continue this discussion. I'm not sure of the approach, I just think this is, DEI is an ongoing issue or situation, so I don't know if the plan is to have an ending to it or whatever, like the first lot with the first committee did, I should say, first committee session did, but I think this should continue, I just don't know, as you said, the route for where it's going to go. So I'd rely on members of that committee to at least let us know what direction or what they want to focus on, or where they want to go with this. So I'm not opposed to eliminating this committee, I just want to know the goals and objectives.
Sure, sure. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think the work should be continued, it's important work, I think we all can improve on this front, and I do echo Select Montegas' comments, that I think we need to take another, maybe a different look at the approach, maybe get a different way of kind of tackling this one, it's a tough one. Maybe a third party to come in and run training for us might be a little more effective, more focused. I do want to continue the work, not only with us but in town. I'm a little disappointed that the school department has not filled Ray Porter's position since, you know, he left town, and I know that they are in the process, but he left before school started. So I think as a town, we should continue moving forward in this direction on all fronts. But again, maybe taking another look at the direction we went, or another way of tackling it, because it's a tough nut to crack, and it takes, it's emotional, it's difficult conversation sometimes, and I think you need people who are, I don't know, maybe it's a different way of looking at it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Mike, anything?
Yeah, I kind of like a lot of what Michael said. I mean, you can't turn your television on in the morning without hearing multiple stories of just ridiculous rhetoric and actions all across the country. You know, I don't know what the answer is, but, you know, if, I think it's an issue that I guess we unfortunately need to be constantly reminded of, and, you know, so if we had some sort of, some sort of dialogue from time to time here in town, if for nothing else, just to maybe shed some light on particular issues going around, hopefully not in our community, but unfortunately, going on all around the country, and, you know, just maybe just as a reminder, at least, at very least, to, that, you know, we're all human beings, we all have feelings, and like Mike said, it can be a very emotional issue for a lot of folks. So, yeah, I think it's something we should, should at least be kept on our radar for the time being.
Yeah, I, obviously, I agree. I think what I found interesting, you know, was the interest and engagement from the other boards and committees across town, you know, and that this, I think, could quickly become a much larger thing, that I don't want to lose the thread on, so to speak. So I think, to all of your points, this warrants us to discuss, come up with a plan, you know, maybe a refined charge, you know, or maybe, I don't know, again, this is where I get stuck, like, I don't know how we'd cut it up, so to speak, to make it, for lack of a better term, digestible, you know, because I think, like the rest of you gentlemen, you know, you're making the point that it's a much bigger thing, it's not an issue, it's not a situation, we're not building a building, we're not paving a road, right? This is an ongoing thing that warrants discussion, but in the context of local government, how do we create the framework for it to live? Because the way our meetings are structured do not necessarily provide for us just to continue to have open-ended discussions till, you know, infinity. So, all right, then, we will continue this to the next meeting for further discussion. All right, item 29, we've got minutes from November 28th. If everyone had a chance to review this, have a look, see if there are any issues. Does anybody find any issues with that backup? The backup of the minutes? No?
Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes from November 28th to 2022.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero.
Four.
Four, zero, zero. So you're just saying five. Thank you, Jim. Okay, subcommittee reports, who wants to start?
I'll start.
Go ahead, Jim.
So I didn't have a chance to meet up with my, with the fire department, because that's my other subcommittee, so I really have no subcommittee report, but I just want to mention that every now and then, when a resident of this town who's made an impact on the town passes away, we, you know, we talk about them and all they've done for the people of this town. Well, we had someone pass away last week that wasn't a resident of Burlington, but had a business in Burlington. Dr. Herbert Rubin, who started Burlington Pediatrics back in the 60s, passed away at age 98 last week. Dr. Rubin, the practice still continues with his son, but Dr. Rubin helped keep, not hundreds, but thousands of Burlington children healthy and safe over those decades. So that's someone whom I think, were you one of them?
I was.
Oh, you were. Mr. Denizio was one of his patients. So I didn't know that, but I just want to acknowledge that he made an impact in this community. Whether you knew him or not, think about the thousands of children who are healthy and safe because of him, and his practice is continuing through his son, Richard, who's still down there, and I just want to acknowledge Herbert's passing and all he's done for the people of Burlington.
Thanks, Jim. Mike?
Actually, Jim's subcommittee, he didn't even want to rescue over in Buracka, didn't we? Our fellow.
I didn't get, yeah, I should have mentioned that, I forgot, but if you want to take, pick up slack on that, Mike?
I don't have my notes in front of me, maybe Paul does, but I know a couple of our paramedics were called through the mutual aid agreement we have, and went over to Buracka for a, there was a near drowning incident over there by the.
Yeah, to the ice, to the ice, I believe.
To the ice, yeah, yeah. And with the successful results. The individual happened to be a Burlington resident, special needs resident here in Burlington, so made it even a little more, made it even a little more sweeter, but again, kudos to my former colleagues at the Burlington Fire Department.
Yes, Josh Caraballo and Josh Landry.
Thank you.
The paramedics involved.
Thank you, thank you. There you go. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Let's just go.
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing, okay. All right, then, I'll go on my rant. So we'll be discussing soon Phase One of the communication support. Jim, thank you for bringing that up earlier. Call center has sent it over to us, and since we're not going to town meeting tonight, I'll read it tonight. I was going to read it tomorrow night, but there you go, and now I have a free evening of reading to, ahead of me. And I'm looking forward to seeing Phase One, and now it came out, and then, you know, we'll probably have them come in for a quick executive summary to the board before they launch into Phase Two. But, you know, that is well on its way. Obviously, the weather outside right now is lousy, it's probably lousy for the week, as I heard that it's supposed to have, it's supposed to have another inclement weather scenario on Wednesday, so please be safe out there. So, and then because of that, obviously, in case anyone missed it, and you're now online watching, Town Meeting tonight is canceled, and it will resume on Wednesday, the 25th, and then, let me see, oh, yeah, my two winter shticks, well, my one winter shtick and my one long-term thing. Cold weather, inclement weather, look out for your neighbors, please, like, it's just common decency. I was thinking about on the ride over, about how lousy the roads were, and, you know, it takes a village, okay? And then we need people to kind of step up and volunteer for stuff, folks. I just pulled up, the town clerk, you know, certifies and issues candidates for the upcoming town election, which this year is on April 1st, and as I scroll through, I see a lot more seats than I do people running for them. So, you know, if you're interested in getting into local politics, and you want to consider something like Town Meeting, where, you know, there are quite a few seats open here, as I see, you know, head down to Town Clerk's office, you can pull papers, get your requisite number of signatures, and give it a go. If not, there are plenty of things you can be appointed to, whether it through one of the boards, as ours, or through Town Meeting, you contact the town moderator to do so. We're always looking for folks to get involved in local politics. All right, Paul, to you for a town administration report.
I don't have anything to say, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, easy peasy.
Motion, or adjourned?
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four, zero, zero. Good night, everybody.